We'll get started to begin on time. Today, we're here in work session to discuss the 2020 Maryland Legislative Session for the Board of Education. You should have received some materials.
Ms. Williams, can you move your microphone closer to you?
Can you hear me now?
Perfect.
You should have received some resource materials, a copy of Policy BJ. And it's this policy that really speaks to what it is that we're going to do today. Annually, we meet to discuss the legislative program. And today, we will be establishing, talking about our legislative core values. We'll also be establishing some priorities for state and federal legislation. We'll talk about our Legislative Response Team. And we will talk about having a representative who is not a member of our Board of Education to serve as our legislative representative in Annapolis. So if you have a copy of BJ, that would be good for you to refer to if you need. The first thing I'd like us to look at is the Legislative Session calendar. As you can see, the first item on there is this work session. MABE has its Annual Legislative Day Luncheon, and that date has not been determined. We don't have a date yet for Washington County's, I'm sorry, we don't have a date yet for our day in Annapolis. There have been years where our day in Annapolis, the Board of Education's day in Annapolis, would coincide with the MABE Legislative Day. So we need to decide if that's something we want to do, or if we want to have a different day in Annapolis. Any questions about this calendar?
Yes. I did not receive any of that information.
You didn't get any of this in your packet, your Friday packet?
No.
Okay, do we have an extra copy?
Want me to get Debbie to run one off?
Here, I had printed it out, so I could pass that one over.
There you go. There you go, Debbie.
So after this work session, at our next business meeting, which would be October 15th, we will adopt these through an action item, our legislative priorities, our core values, our initiatives, the makeup of the Legislative Response Team, and choosing our legislative representative. So all of that will be done formally on October 15th. Any questions about the calendar?
The only question I had was, and we can discuss it later, but what were the benefits of combining it with MABE if we do our day with MABE down there?
What were the benefits? Well, it meant that those who were serving on the MABE Legislative Committee didn't have to make two trips to Annapolis. That was one benefit.
And is it sort of the whole day is kind of education-focused because of MABE?
Yes, there's a big education focus that day, and a lot of legislators come to the luncheon, and it's a good day to meet with them about any issues that we have.
Okay.
And that day will be selected soon. Tomorrow is the day that senators can request of the Senate President what days they want to have their legislative days. So MABE has got somebody, one of the senators, asking for certain dates, but I don't know what those dates are.
Thanks.
But they should know in a week or so.
And we have not determined when the delegation, our delegation is going to be meeting, but they're, sticks in my mind, they were usually Wednesday mornings, but...
In Indianapolis, they're right for meetings.
Yes.
We have not received any details on that yet, but we...
Okay.
Once we have that information, we certainly will share it.
Okay. Any other questions? There is one date on the back of the paper, don't overlook that, that's the final legislative report.
Mr. Trotta, were you talking about the November 6th meeting? We don't have a date, or time for that yet.
We do not have a time for that, but once the session starts, the delegation meets early in the morning, usually on Wednesdays, but we have not yet been informed as to whether those meetings have been scheduled.
What I'm talking about are, when we meet with them.
Yes.
You mean that, I'm confused.
It's the third, the third. The third thing on here is that delegation meeting here in Washington County. But what we have where it says TBD is their, I think they have them weekly, they have their delegation meetings, and we've gone down in the past at their request to meet with them. And I think typically, it's been a Wednesday morning, but that might not hold true this session.
Okay, but I think, back to my original question, so on November 6th, when we meet with them, we don't have a time for that yet.
We don't. We have requested morning time, but we've not heard back.
Okay, thank you.
At least I haven't heard back. Anything else about the calendar? Okay, so let's move on to our legislative program. You should have something that says just that at the top. If you'll take a look, please, at our core values. Our first core value, adequate and equitable local and state funding. We have three points under there.
And I believe, are these the same as last year?
There's no change in these, correct. Okay, the second is local control. And the third is that legislative mandates should be limited and fully funded by the Any questions about those? Are we good with those for this year? Okay, there's a green bar that says legislative priorities for the 2020 Legislative Session. And the current LRT met, and we are suggesting the following initiatives. I guess there's just one big one, which is to support the Urban Improvement Project Partnership, and to support the efforts of the delegation to obtain state funding. So I guess that would be bond bills that were, that could come up this year.
Central bond bills, and then I think the governor, you know, has to appropriate money across five years. I'm not sure, we might be in year three of that already, but I think that's promised from one budget to the next, to complete those five years of funding from the governor for the UIP project.
So that is the priority that has been established by our current LRT. If you have any others that you would like to suggest. Now would be the time.
Let me just say that the issue that we've had for the past two years, and haven't been able to get through, it's been suggested that if an more urban area legislator introduces that legislation, that we certainly could be supportive, but that that's sort of seen as an urban, more urban issue, as more of the kids that going into juvenile services are urban kids. And so we are waiting, we're talking to some of the other counties where there may be introduction of such a bill, in which case I bring it to your attention immediately.
Thank you. So again, are we good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll move on then to the Legislative Watch List. We have a number of things here. Of course, we'll be watching, watching and waiting and wondering, hoping with regard to what comes out of the Kerwin Commission legislation.
I have a question for you. Where are we right now presently with this Kerwin? Where are we setting, are they, is there committees that are meeting, they're the...
Yes, it's the Kerwin Commission, and they even have at this point the subcommittee that's looking at how funds would be allocated, assuming, they haven't, they haven't been dealing with how funds will be generated, they're dealing more with how funds would be allocated, and the different formula that are underway. And again, there's, there are the different components of the program, the pre-K, the teachers' salary increases, the more for children with special needs and so forth, and trying to equate all of those formulaically, so, but then just defining, trying to define also how much the county would be responsible for versus how much the state would be responsible for. So that's going on right now, and is not resolved. I think you've got some charts that suggest different things. So that's going on. And then the Kerwin Commission itself is meeting again, has a series of meetings coming up where they will again take those recommendations from that subcommittee and make their final recommendations, which will then go to the legislature and the governor.
So do you think that they're actually contacting the counties and asking them any questions of support, or how they want to come to fund it?
Well, the committee, the committee has representatives from MABE and from, from the superintendents, and the Subcommittee on Funding unfortunately seems to be, again, more focused on the larger counties. The smallest county that is represented is County Executive Glassman from Harford County. So in, in respect to this county, and Charles County, and Carroll County, I think there are like five of us that are between 20,000 and 40,000 students, we don't have a lot of voice. And we're kind of that middle, middle group that I always point out, that we're not big, we're not little, we're not rich, we're not too poor, you know, and so it's, it's, it's something we have to be watching in terms of making sure that we don't get forgotten.
And to follow up on Art's comments, in June of this year, they formed a smaller work group just on the funding, and on October the 8th, they're calling it the Decision Meeting. And quite frankly, it is a critical meeting, and what they're going to look at is the distribution of costs and additional funding between state and local jurisdictions. And so it's the anticipated, we will find out more information on that date as to how the increased costs will be covered by the state government and by the local government, but also to follow up on Art's comments, they do have this work group which has, has some, some representation there, and I believe that MAKO is, which represents the, the local governments, have been monitoring this very closely.
But they're not in that committee?
They're, they're in, I think they have a represent, yeah, Barry Glassman is one of their representatives.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I found it helpful in our packet this Friday, they have an article about the Kerwin Funding Work Group closing in on final recommendations. They're setting the new base per pupil by 2030, the new base inflated to FY $30 would be $11,000 per pupil, currently it's $7,200 per pupil. The bulk of those expenses going up, the additions of costs would be increased salaries, cost of collaborative time, which I assume is trying to get more, hiring more teachers, where teachers are in the classroom less, correct?
Additional planning time.
Yep. And then the smaller items are principal career ladder, behavioral health, increased supplies and materials. But I thought it was really helpful, it just shows what they're expecting spending to be, go up to. And then, of course, it gives more weight to special education, and some things I didn't quite understand, but I can ask Boyd about later. But the other thing that I found really fascinating, as we talk about needing a voice in Annapolis, is the local appropriations versus maintenance of effort chart. It's really fascinating to look at the counties that are spending way more than maintenance of effort, and it's pretty depressing when you see our counties at zero. Counties collectively added $238 million on top of the required maintenance of effort. So collectively, across the state, $238 million more than they were required to give. And, you know, the big one is Prince George's County, makes up 12% of that. So $85 million more than they were required to give. And most, there are a heck of a lot of counties on here giving more than the maintenance of effort, and we're one of the very few that are right at zero. So it tells you a lot. So if we want a voice in Annapolis, they're going to look at the people that are paying up.
In fact, they are.
Yeah. It doesn't make us look very good.
The other thing about the Kerwin is that there's, there's a sense that, that there may be an emphasis more on the construction program this year than on really adopting Kerwin long range, and we don't really know where that's going to be. The governor has shown some, I wouldn't say disinterest, but some suggestion that he's not fully on board with Kerwin. And so whether the financing will come in through the budget, as people were hopeful, whether the legislature will push to get it in. So Kerwin is hot, very hot, but, but lots of caution at the same time. So it, it's going to be a very dominant thing, whether it is pushed for this year or for a little farther out. So not going to be an easy session.
No, and we're going to have to be watching carefully and studying carefully to know what, each bill that might be proposed, what the implications will be for this county and for our students, so...
Yeah, that's, I think I pointed out that to you in, in previous meetings, that most of the time, all of us in MABE are pretty much together, holding hands, wanting the same thing. But when you get to dividing up money by formulas, we're not all on the same page. And so looking out for our own counties and counties like us is going to be important. And, you know, the tensions between, for instance, Montgomery County and Baltimore City are just huge, whereas, you know, the rest of us squeezed in between those two, it still is really necessary to be looking out for, we won't all be testifying in favor of the same thing this year on this, on this subject.
The other commission that is on our watch list is, of course, the NOT Commission, and that deals with the 21st Century School Facilities and the IAC, the Interagency Commission, school construction. So again, we want to be watching that very carefully and making sure that there's an equitable distribution of the funds for school construction. I don't know, Mr. Trotta, did you want to say anything with regard to any legislation there?
Certainly, and we have some, some good news to report, but also some concerns and things that we need to be monitoring during the session. The good news is that when, when there's a school construction project, the state shares a certain percentage of the cost, and the local government shares a certain percentage of the cost. So we have been at a 71%, 19% share, and that recently changed to 79-21. Did I have it backwards?
No, you hit it right.
71-29.
That was a distraction.
We're sorry.
Sorry.
We knew what you meant.
I'm not a mathematician. But that's good news, because it makes it more affordable for the local government to provide those additional funds so that we can match the state's contribution. The other good news, and our board president mentioned it at the last business meeting, is our superior rating on maintenance of our school buildings, we're extremely proud of that. That does not happen by accident. I mean, that's a concerted effort on a number of people working together. But here's our concern, we need to watch the IAC, the Interagency on School Construction, which is now known as the Commission, to make certain that as they move forward, because they're making changes to COMAR, that they, they maintain rewarding those school districts that really take pride in their, their buildings, and engage in these systemic projects, air conditioning projects, heating projects, your roof replacements and things of that nature. So we have some concerns, we submitted some comments to the IAC in September expressing concerns about how they're changing some of the ways that they fund these types of projects. We also, during the last session, just to refresh your memory, we had House Bill 727, where 92% of the new construction money was going to go to the seven largest school districts, which only have 75% of the students. That would leave 8% to 17 of the remaining school districts who have 25% of the students. This bill was introduced the very last week of the session, there was great pressure applied. We oppose this bill. I want to commend Mrs. Kay, because she was there talking to the elected officials about this, but we, I believe that something of this nature will be pressed forward during the upcoming session, so we'll be watching, watching this very closely. There's also a work group that's looking at how school funding ought to be allocated, and there was an article that we shared with the board members and the superintendent that appeared in the Daily Record, which said that it seemed like there was too much difference of opinion on this work group, that they've sort of suspended their work at this point in time. So this is, once again, different districts taking a different approach, but clearly the larger districts wanting the lion's share of the funding that's available.
And this bill, we expect that this bill, again, will involve using the stadium authority to issue vast amounts of bonding, so that people can kind of build ahead, but then the repayment will be stretched out farther than the 15 years that the, that the state normally does, so that people will be mortgaged out well into the future, which could affect what you can do 20 years from now, so.
Thank you. The third thing on our watch list is, would be any bills that come, come forward with regard to the burden of proof. And we had a new law last year that affected us with regard to education of special ed students and their IEPs, and it's our feeling that the current burden of proof standard should not be changed, that it should be retained, and that we should be opposing any shifting of additional costs to local school systems. So we want to be watching that. And then, the next item on the list is the transfer of pension costs. So with all the talk of increasing salaries of teachers, as recommended by the Kerwin Commission, an increase in salary, the other end, in due time, comes the concern of how do you fund those pensions for those teachers? And so we, we want to be watching very carefully what's happening in the legislative session with regard to any transfer of pension costs. I don't know if you wanted to speak to that?
I think it speaks for itself.
What I would point out is that the number that we have placed in your materials, $6.3 million, that's a new cost, not only to our local Board of Education, but across the state of Maryland. From a historic perspective, what had occurred is, is that the teacher's pension plan was costing the state of Maryland $1 billion a year to fund. They decided that the best way to approach it would be to pass these costs on to the local governments. So they then passed the cost over to the local governments. The local governments have maxed out what they're required to contribute. So every time a local Board of Education in Maryland gives a pay increase to those in the Teachers Association, or those that are covered in that pension plan, you're going, the cost, the, the local boards pick up what they refer to as the full normal cost. So this... So this $6.3 million figure will continue to increase from year to year, and it's directly related to pay increases. And I would anticipate at some time in the future, given the size of some of the larger counties, that, that this cost has got to be significant for them today and will continue to grow.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. And then the last thing we have on our watch list is, we want to be watching to be sure that there are no changes to the Public School Labor Relations Board, anything giving them more power or more authority. So those are the items that appear on our watch list. If there's anything that you think needs to be added, Mrs. Fisher?
If nobody else wants to talk about the watch list, I'd like to go back to something under our core values.
Sure.
And it's the very last item, let us see. Legislative mandate should be limited and fully funded by the state. I think Policy Committee, it might be a little more aware of these costs as new programs are written, or the state, or the state board either one, or change requirements in some of these policies that we've had to rewrite. They keep saying in their analysis that there's no increased funding to the local boards, and that just is not true. I don't know how many of the last several have multiple costs passed on to the local LEAs. And I don't know if there's anything we can do to emphasize, I think somebody, there needs to be some other group, I don't know if it's MAB needs to be more active on it or not, some other group that talks about that, because whoever evaluates that, is they're producing a new law or a new rule or a new update to a policy, isn't really paying much attention to what are, or is ignorant of how these things are affecting the individual LEAs.
I can assure you, though, that MAB, on any bill that is a mandate, is in there on a negative voice as to its cost. So it's not that MAB isn't speaking up, it's that the legislature doesn't listen when...
What can we do to put a fire under the legislators?
We talk to the legislators more and more and help them realize it. And maybe, maybe charting some of the more recent mandates and what those additional costs have been, I mean, even when you do a little curriculum change and you have to do new materials, I presume there's some cost related to that. And so, yeah, if you came up with some documentation, I'll make sure it gets into the hands of people that might be looking at decision-making.
I think, too, watching very carefully the fiscal notes that are attached to some of this legislation, that, you know, we, we read it very carefully and we take exception to it when there needs to be exception taken.
Yes.
And that, you know, we paint them the picture that is our reality, not necessarily what information they are working from. Yeah, so.
Well, one of those areas has to do with personnel. They will require a new person be added to staff to manage whatever issue it is that's being brought up. And yet they still say there's no cost to the LEA. Well, if you've got to hire somebody else, there's definitely additional costs, but it is materials and technology and just, so I, I like your idea. I do think we need to go back and, and list the costs in some of the recent changes.
Really interesting.
I don't know if that will be the Policy Committee's job or not, but we certainly are aware of that. We've discussed them during our meetings.
Well, some things are a little bit hard to define, but we know House Bill's at 486. Tony, is that the one we've been, your favorite bill? I mean, we know that it's put a big overload on HR to try to keep up with the background, the additional background check, I mean, that's not quite right, but additional information you have to secure from anybody that's worked with children before in their past. Not only has it created that cost, it's created a delay in hiring people. So we have people that we have made job offers to, and they've sent out their paperwork. The other employers have 20 days to respond to that. Sometimes we'll have to get a sub in for a position while we're waiting for the person to start, because they can't start until we get all their paperwork in. And it's difficult to ask a former employer to, I really need his paperwork. I don't know what leverage you have over that, but that's, you know, there's a couple embedded costs in that, some that's pretty obvious and some that's less obvious.
So by consensus, can we agree to move forward those things that we've discussed, our calendar, the core values, our legislative priorities, and our watch list? You may have noted that this year, we are not asking our delegation to put forward any bills for us. That's, that's coming from the Legislative Response Team. That's their recommendation. However, if there's something that you think we should be talking to our delegation about in terms of legislation that they may sponsor?
Are we going to try again with the, what about the transfer of the juveniles?
That's what I mentioned earlier. The, the sense is that that should, the bill should be initiated by a more urban county. And then we can jump aboard. But it appears that that is the route that might, might be successful. And I'm talking particularly Montgomery County. I mean, we had several counties actually endorsing the bill last year, but whether they will be wanting to initiate it, I don't know yet.
Okay, so do we have consensus? Are we good with those?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I will move on then to the composition of this year's Legislative Response Team. I'd like to refer you to Policy BJ. Under Policy Statements and Procedures, number two, the LRT will be comprised of Board of Education President, at least one other board member, the Superintendent, the Chief Legal Counsel, and the Designated Legislative Representative. In no case will more than three board members be appointed to the LRT.
Are we nominating people?
Well, I think self-nominating.
Definitely the board president.
Definitely the board president and at least one other. I would like to suggest that Vice President Stauffer be that at least one other, in as much as he is our MAB representative on the Legislative Committee. He would be in a position of knowledge with regard to things that are happening in Annapolis by way of that Legislative Committee.
I would agree with that.
And then we have room for one more, if there's anyone else who has a desire to serve on the LRT.
What's the, what's the time commitment?
Well...
Is it a lot here, or is it a lot in Annapolis?
There's, there's a lot of conversation that goes on, a lot of quick response to We do have some meetings. And we have been to Annapolis to testify. So it just, it just depends. It's kind of hard to know.
Okay.
Okay? Do you have an interest?
It's a good experience.
Yeah, I'm definitely interested. I'd have to, if you guys are representing and I couldn't make meetings, that would be fine, correct? I mean, it's strive to make a meeting, but, you know, with a day job, sometimes it's difficult, but, but yeah, I'd be happy to represent.
Thank you, Mr. Beckford. So this would be something that we would have as an action item. That would be on October 15th. So that would, that would be a motion that would be made as to the makeup of the LRT. Okay? Thank you. And that brings us to our final agenda item, which is the selection of an individual to serve as Board of Education's Legislative Representative in Annapolis for this legislative So by general consensus, I would hope our choice would be Mrs. Cade. Mrs. Cade has done such fine work for us in the past. Giving a great thought over there, Mr. Beckford. So by general consensus?
Yes.
Okay. And again, this would be an action item for our October 15th meeting. Okay, great. So that's all I have on today's agenda. Is there anything else that any member of the LRT or any board member would like to discuss at this time regarding our legislative priorities?
Nothing specific. I would like to pick Artis' brain on, because we know that Kerwin, like you said, the funding for Kerwin is going to be a big issue. Do you see any issues that seem to be rising to the top, or even if it doesn't get fully funded, because that's a massive bill? Do you think it'll be teacher salaries, or basically what will priorities be?
Priorities seem to be pre-K and teacher salaries.
Okay.
And then probably right after that is teacher education and, and teacher relief, and then also special needs kids, more for poverty and, and for special ed.
Got it.
But that kind of covers the whole gamut, so.
Yeah.
Do you see the teacher education element of that? What are they moving towards? I've heard that, you know, there's been talk that teachers should be, what is it?
Master teacher.
National Board Certified?
Board Certified, yeah. Is that something that's become a, will become a mandate? Because that has cost...
I think that one is going to be kind of shoved toward the lower end of the spectrum.
No, there's one...
Yeah, there's one legislator who just is, is, and he's chairman of a committee, who's very keen on this, but I don't think that there's a huge unanimity about this.
Any other elements that would impact not only our teachers, but, you know, cost that might be included in the education element of Kerwin?
Well, the whole thing about teacher education and, and having, having it become a profession that is equal in pay with other professions that require the same amount of education is, you know, that's, that's huge. And, but it's pretty philosophical, too. And, I mean, I see that spread over a lot of years, I mean, as a goal more than as something that gets funded right away. But I may be wrong.
Yeah. Thank you. Artis, for this year, the Kerwin money, or the blueprint money is already established for FY '21. So the start of July 1st, well, I say it's established, but I guess they always could add something or change something. But there's no new money in there for teacher incentive funding or anything. I think there's a reoccurring chunk for what they gave us this past year.
Yes.
And I think the only number in that list that went up was pre-K, and I assume that's because they're anticipating more districts added pre-K, and they'll have to spread the money out across more pre-K students. So I don't know if that'll mean more money for us in pre-K or, or per student, or maybe less, because more people added than they allowed money for, or potentially even more money per student if not as many districts started pre-K. So that'll be interesting to see how that works out.
Is that still a separate funding? It's not necessarily part of maintenance of effort, pre-K students?
Right. It is not part of, it's not part of maintenance of efforts, it's not part of the compensatory funding or the formula right now. It's part of this Maryland blueprint money.
And that would, the, these formula discussions would, that, we'd have to wait for that before we would know, right? Or it would be a law that passed, I guess, or?
Yeah, the way I think this whole thing works out, the formula committee comes out with their recommendation, rolls over to the Kerwin Recommendation Group, and then they put in all one final recommendation of language and formula. Then it rolls over to the legislative body to then pass laws to implement it. The, I mean, everyone's thinking Kerwin is law or recommendations are law, you know, none of that's law. It's not till somebody puts it into COMAR or passes laws that indicate what's going to happen, right? I mean, the formula, they could take the formula and completely flip it around the other way and pass it a completely, completely different than what's recommended, possibly.
And the secondary part of that is that define, there's, there is a sense this time, different from Thornton, that they need to be defining revenue sources for this. And so they're looking at marijuana money, they're looking at, you know, various other possible funding sources that might generate significant dollars. But, and I think there'll be a resistance to passing the bill for the programs without passing revenue sources this time.
Yeah. I think, Mr. Trotta, in your most recent read of last year's recommendation, there was also a lot of cuts to, not necessarily current funding, but current things that we do, to make all this balance out. And that's, that's a little scary if that all becomes part of the recommendations or, or part of the assumptions. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think one place you were suggesting it, it almost indicates that special ed funding could be cut in half because of, you know, the instruction that we're providing with the better paid teachers and, and the training that they've had, that that would reduce the need for special education funding. I mean, there are assumptions like that, that I think are embedded in some of the details of the Kerwin report, that I think we need to pay attention to as well and watch how those things might be passed. Very scary.
Very scary.
The Commission issued a report in January of 2019, and I don't think much attention's been paid to their assumptions on what they see as costs that will go away and costs that can be eliminated. So the projection over a 10-year period is that $3.8 billion more will be spent by 2030 on public education. They, that is in 2020, dollars, no adjustment for inflation. So I think that's an important point that they make. But they assume over the same time period, $2.1 billion in savings, which means if they don't realize the savings, the actual cost will be almost $6 billion. So here's where they project savings, as Dr. Michael's indicated. That is, with increased training for teachers, they project that the number of special education students by 2030 will be reduced by 50%. They also, there are, for teachers, they, they would eliminate the National Board stipends would be eliminated because salaries would be increased, and so it would not be necessary to provide those stipends. The other item that they also note would be that central office staff would be reduced by 21% by that, over that time period, because principals and teachers would be assuming central office functions. There's no specifics as to what those functions would be. The final comment that they make, and this is not a recommendation, it's not in their cost assessment, is that if you implement all the recommendations of Kerwin by 2030 for grades, fourth grade and beyond, you could increase class size from 30, from, to 30 to 40 students per class, because of the way they'll have things structured and because of the implementation of the recommendations. But I want to stress that's not a recommendation, it's not part of their cost savings analysis, but it's something that they believe local Boards of Education could do at that point in time, 10 years from now.
That doesn't make much sense, because we've been building smaller classrooms.
I mean, I, and that's, that's in their report, the January 2019 report. It starts at about page 140, and I believe we shared the report with the members of the Board some time ago. We certainly can get that information to you if you, if you would like that.
Could I ask something about the NOT? You know, when I heard you say 79-21 is the new formula, will it... new formula? Is that set in stone? I mean, is that...
That's been passed.
That's been passed?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And how much money, or how much money have we let get away at 71% in the last 10 years? Because how many years have we gone with next to nothing being provided by our, you know, our county commissioners? I mean, that's nice. The 79% sounds great, but there's still the 21, extra 21% that the county has to divvy up, and there's been no real indication that they have any intention of doing that.
We get the precise numbers for you, but it's several million dollars that have been left on...
I would think it's more than several million.
I think the one year, we could have secured eight million, and we only got four. And then had another year, we could have secured eight million, we only asked for two, because we didn't have the local match.
That's frustrating. I mean, that sounds great. I mean, don't get me wrong, that sounds wonderful, the 79%. The past history is not giving me a fuzzy feeling that we're going to benefit from that, because if they don't match, if they don't give divvy up at 21%, we've just 80% of what, you know, 80 cents on every dollar, we're sending back to, you know, we're losing for all intents and purposes. Kind of like Baltimore did that. I mean, they had how many millions of dollars that they didn't spend? You know, that, and that wasn't because, I mean, our guys do a great job, and they didn't, you know? But it's just, you know, that scares me.
Well, in the last couple of years, part of that match has come from the Board of Ed, because the UIP money that you've contributed, the four million, you know, we anticipate we'll use somewhere, you know, close to three million of that for that project. Traditionally, it wouldn't have come from the Board of Education as a match.
Well, it doesn't seem to make much sense to be advocating and working hard to make sure that we are getting an equitable share, and then when it comes time to use that share, we don't get, we don't get it. It reverts to the pot and someone else is able to access it, so it is frustrating. It's very frustrating.
Everything that I've put up with for 15 years, I think that one annoys me the most, that we have an opportunity to get 79% of a building project, and we can't do it, a necessary building project. We can't do it because the county won't divvy up their share. It just goes on and on and on.
Well, I think it's going to be very important that we maximize that opportunity right now, because with changes potentially that they might do to, are they going to continue to do systemic projects, fund systemic projects? There's lots of things in the wind that we're not sure what's going to happen. They might even allocate the majority of the money to, the schools are in a worse shape. In one way, that makes sense, but if you didn't take care of your buildings, it doesn't, it's not going to make sense to those of us who took care of our buildings for the money to go that way. So right now, while the funding formula is 7921, and the rules are similar to what they've been for a long while, we've got to maximize that right now.
I think almost all of our high schools are as old as me. I mean, it really are. We've kept them up very, very well. Don't get me wrong, but there's only so long that a school, a school of that size or whatever can be effective, so...
With, can I ask a question? I was just curious, with the majority of county commissioners voting to increase the income tax in Washington County, have there been any discussions about us possibly getting some of that money?
I mean, we'll present our budget as we, as we, you know, will, and whenever that'll be, sometime after the new year, I guess. And then the CIP, we meet with them here in the coming weeks or months to present our CIP to them. So I'd hope they would look at that. It appears they had some year-end money here in FY '19, according to the paper, looked like, you know, several million dollars were distributed to various locations.
It's like 6.4 million that they, they had at the end of the year.
Would appear that way, based on what I read in the paper. I can't say for sure.
Some of it went to Blackrock, I believe, and some to Highway?
I think some went to the Roads Department.
Roads Department.
They may have already had budgeted for the election building, I'm not sure, some other improvements of things. Seemed like there was another big one besides the road part. Is that coming to me?
At one of our recent meetings with commissioners, one of the commissioners, and I'm not sure which one it was, mentioned revisiting the APFO. I mean, there are a number of new developments in proposal, and how long have we gone without collecting on those developments that have gone in? They don't have money, why not?
Some of those new developments are going to be seniors. They're going to be senior living, you know, like Emerald Point and some of the others that are still building. I mean, there's money to be made if they would do it, but I don't know. I don't know, just... I do know that there's a new 50 unit, can't remember the name of it, I apologize, but it's senior. You know, it's an Emerald Point type.
Well, there's a 250 unit proposed out off Marshall Street.
Oh, yeah, that's going to be, but that's going to, believe it or not, that's going to be...
Rentals.
Low income, yeah.
I mean, more Section Eights?
Hard to tell.
I think they're dependent upon securing some support from some type of governmental agency, so I think they have an app, they've got to submit an application, they have to get that secured before anything happens out of that yet, similar to McCleary Hill.
Okay, there's nothing else, then? I think we've accomplished everything we set out to accomplish today, and we'll take final action on these things on October 15th. Thank you.